Select Board's meeting, February 26, 2019. In attendance Chairman Deedy, Mr. Fox, Mr. Mogul, Mr. Steinhardt, and Mrs. Pendleton.
Good evening, folks. First up is public conference. Anyone have anything they'd like to say? Please just give us your name and address for the record. Here we go again. All right. So first up is payables warrant, 1-9-2-0-B, dated 2-25-20, in the amount of $359,841.38. Next up will be regular session minutes for 2-19-19.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And do we have executive sessions? Need a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so 1A is discussion approved Southfield MOA for LPP program expenses. So you folks met with Connecticut, Southfield?
Yeah, Doug and I did.
How'd it go?
It went well. They, uh, she went before her board and made a proposal to include the funds
Okay.
for the agreement that the two attorneys have worked out. It would be a $2,000 payment in year one with an annual increase of $200 per year thereafter. And that, that addresses the constitutional issue they had with the, uh, the landowners along the waterfront in Connecticut not wanting to pay fees to the town under a, uh, an issue with no taxation without representation. So, uh, the, uh, the Southfields elected wanted to address the issue with their council.
Okay. So do they still have to fill out the paperwork for the dock?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we have to do all the paperwork. This is just the dollar.
The dollars will come from the town versus?
From the town of Southfield versus us going door-to-door for the money. They still gotta, the residents stuff, do their paperwork
Right.
under the LPP.
Right. Still need to meet the regulations, need, still need to do all the technical stuff and applications.
Right.
It's mainly the transfer of dollars because they are citizens in another community in another state.
So did they figure that?
So this was looked at by the, uh, the map of all the different potential parcels.
All right, and that's where they came up with that number?
Yeah.
Okay.
This codifies a meeting that we had six, eight months ago with members of CONCOM, Lake Management, Harbor Master, their, their Conservation Commission, and their, uh, first selectman.
Okay.
We agreed in principle back then, it just took the lawyers that long to get it all put to form and...
Well, it took us a while to send them the information on all our, our data. We had to put all our data together and send it to them.
Okay.
Just wondering, Joe, is, or are all?
You're coming, you're coming to me as well.
As representative from Conservation Commission.
Thank you, sir.
And we are in charge of the LPP at the time.
Okay.
I was wondering, you know, it, you know, we would've liked to have seen a copy of the MOU and understanding before you were atified tonight. And I also spoke to Mr. Greenalls, and he also was interested in doing the same, just to make sure that the wording was right and as far as the paperwork goes, it's all gonna come through our office, so?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, so, just wanted to make sure that...
So my understanding is nothing's changed other, because they, some of them maybe filled it out in the past and some didn't? Have you ever gotten one out of Connecticut?
Some people did apply before, yes.
Yeah. So my understanding?
But now everyone is going to be applying, is that the understanding?
That, that part really hasn't changed. There's, everyone's supposed to apply under the LPP or they can go through the arduous state process if they'd like, right? This just takes the financial piece out of it. There was a lot of pushback from Southfield residents that they didn't want to pay into Mass when they live in Connecticut. So the city, the, sorry, the town of Southfield and the first selectmen and their select board have stepped up and are willing to make that payment in lieu of us going door-to-door.
I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I just was, would want, wanted to see how it was gonna be arranged for the paperwork to be done primarily, make sure that we could approve where the docks are put as well because of that index.
We didn't change anything. Obviously, the LPP is, is an existing document. This is strictly the financial piece.
Okay.
And based on the collection rate, the collection rate previous to what the money that's coming in with the annual thing, it takes up to about $5,000 over the course of the five-year agreement, right?
So you will have to be billing the residents directly, it'll be coming from the town.
From the town of Southfield. But the requirement under the paperwork piece is still there.
Right.
So that, nothing under the, we didn't, there's nothing changed about the LPP plus program, other than we don't have to collect money from residents in Southfield.
Okay, well, their application has on the form how much it costs per dock, per boat.
Yep.
So will we need to make another form for the Southfield residents as well, maybe? Just to register their docks?
Or they can just put, now applicable for those people from out of Southfield.
Yeah, I mean, this is to gain a higher rate of compliance with the payment.
Oh, I, believe me, I'm on board.
It's much better than it has been.
Make sure that we're...
So, and, and it would resolve an issue between maybe state constitutions and state laws and taxation.
And I understand the whole taxation law.
So we don't want to, um, we don't want to lose this opportunity.
Oh, yeah.
And the chief needs the money for patrolling.
So let me ask you, is, it's a set fee of 2,000 plus 200 if?
An escalator per year.
Per year.
Right. So even if, in the past, they didn't want to do it, they still don't want to do it, the 2,000 still comes in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because that's probably your biggest problem, is people just don't want to do it. It's not so much the money asked.
Correct.
They don't want to do it, which that doesn't help either way. That's still the problem. The good news is, I guess, at times...
And now we have enforcement ability. Is that true, or no?
It's the same as it was under existing LPP. All, all we're doing is we're getting a check from the town of Southfield instead of each resident.
Is it the same as the Southfield residents, or the same as it was for the Southfield residents?
The town of Southfield is picking up the tab for the Southfield residents.
So just, they're just doing the financial piece.
Correct. Nothing to do with the LPP and...
Or enforcing or anything.
Correct. So if, if you have to go door-to-door to get the paperwork, you can still do that.
Right.
Our take on it, from that meeting when everyone was there, was the take was, if, people will be more apt to do the paperwork and do what they're supposed to do if they don't have to write a check to, to another state.
Well, absolutely.
Right. So that was really the...
I know that was a lot of money, but...
Right. Well, this, this is more money than we've ever seen before under the LPP.
Oh, it'll be, yeah.
So it looked like a win-win-win for everybody.
Right. And even if it's not the best deal, maybe the only deal we'll have.
Right. A lot of the issues we've had from Southfield are, are safety compliances.
Right. And they understand that that's, that's still in play for each one of those dollars.
Right. Absolutely. This is strictly the, the, the money side of it. It has nothing to do with anything else. We didn't go anywhere near the rest of the LPP as far as changing what people have to do or can do with their docks or not report or whatever. They still have to do all of that. It's just the town of Southfield stepped up and said, you know what, you're right. This is an arduous process for, the alternative is for all the people in Connecticut to have to file with Mass DEP if we really wanted to go crazy with it and just turn it back over to the state, which loses the money for the boat controls and then starts getting these people all mailed from DEP, which nobody wants to get.
Right.
So this was a, a, a very reasonable compromise.
Sounds like a good thing.
And we didn't touch the rest of the paperwork.
Exactly. Nothing. It's strictly, it's strictly the monetary piece. And it absolves CONCOM and anyone else from having to try to chase down money from people in Connecticut. Ask the governor about the tolls on the Mass bike, same deal. We did better.
Yeah, actually, you did. By $2,000 so far.
We did better.
Yeah. Don't tell the governor.
That's right.
No, no, leave that out of the conversation. So I need a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. MMA Legislative Breakfast. Um, this is for what? There's one in Springfield, like, March 9th.
April.
Is it April?
Yeah, it's Friday, April, um...
8th?
5th.
What do I know?
So there might be a, uh, one that we can attend.
Yeah. Let me know how it is. I'm not going.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm busy. All right. The bond prospectus immunization schedule.
Yeah, that's just to let you know, the, uh, we've been working on with the pump truck, fire truck. Yep, fire truck, water pump station, all those other things that have to be taken care of in terms of the bond.
Okay.
So that's gonna be getting ready to go out at the end of the month. Now, you may choose to ask the treasure collector to roll over those short-term notes if you think you're gonna be having another, um, debt service issue come out of, come out of the upcoming March 19th town meeting?
Yeah, if we can wait, I'd wait.
So that, they'd have to roll that over and go through another couple of, um, you know, months of short-term borrowing so that that issue can be done. And if you want to, obviously, the prospectus tells you what's in there. You know, it's the, uh, the fire apparatus.
Million seven for pump station.
The water meters.
Million two for fire truck, 240,000 for DPW.
Right.
3,260,000 for water mains, 374,000 for water meters.
Right, so seven forms.
466,000 for the other meters. Total is seven, am I reading that right? No.
Yep, 7 million.
7,240,000.
Right, and that's from the last, like, three or four years worth of, um...
Yes.
Town meetings. Because we haven't done, we've been doing short-term, small, statehouse mills and things like that. We haven't done a large issue since July 2010. Last time, we did a large issue. The schools did an enormous issue.
Right.
That exclusion. In the last couple of years, so...
All right, so do we need...
Of course, we pay their, our share as a member community through the regional assessment.
Right.
We pay them for that debt service.
Yes. We sure do. Okay. So do we need a motion to let this go on further, or is this just an FYI?
Um, you don't need to make the decision today, but you should make a decision whether or not you're gonna want to hold off on doing this permanent issue until you get a better idea, or if you're gonna have to...
So...
Because we'll have to roll those notes over, because we only have a week or two to make that decision.
On this?
On this.
Okay.
On whether or not, because the prospectus has already been drafted on this.
Okay.
And there's a bond rating meeting coming up in the next couple of weeks with Moody's.
For our, the town's bond rating?
Yeah, to, to update it. Right now, it's a double A2.
Okay.
But it hasn't been rerated in a while. And that, of course, is your cost of borrowing money.
Yep.
Just like a credit rating for an individual.
Just a question, I noticed some of these are enterprise amounts. When we do a bond, and since it hasn't been done since 2010, is prior to my tenure on this board, can, do we lump the enterprise monies into, into a single borrowing?
Well, it's all through the, um...
And we don't have to issue a separate set of notes for, say, the water enterprise or the sewer enterprise?
Oh, no, no.
We can lump it under the town?
It's one thing.
Okay.
It's one document, and it's spread out in the budget, all the debt service payments, the amortization schedules are put in by the financial advisor and the town accountant and the treasure collector.
So that's why, at a town meeting, it's not just water users that vote on a, a borrowing authorization, because it's a town note?
Right.
In the end, that's why...
It doesn't matter whether it's a sewer vote or a water vote.
Because the town's on the hook for all of it.
The town is, is the final guarantor of the money when it, as a general obligation bond.
Okay.
And that would be the same case even if we were doing a note for the CBC. The town is the ultimate backer.
Right, right, right. But the, in the budget, right, the water, sewer...
Special revenue fund.
Amulets are special revenue and, and, they call them, what are they, enterprise or whatever?
They're special revenue funds.
Right, right. But the town is the guarantor of the note.
Indiana.
So that's why it voted on at town meeting, not by all residents, not the, those that are served by the, yeah, exactly.
By the legislative bodies.
Got it.
Only legislatures can appropriate money.
Got it.
So we can put this off a week, or should we?
Yeah, if you want to put it off a week, just to give us an answer.
Thoughts?
I, I, I think we got a special town meeting in the 19th. I don't think there's any to put it off. I think we need to do the short-term borrowing, see what happens.
I agree.
Well, that we have to do anyway.
Okay.
This is the long-term borrowing.
Right. So we're gonna do short-term borrowing, no matter what.
You're delaying the long-term borrowing for these other issues.
Right.
Making you do another short-term borrowing and incur short-term...
Short-term borrowing. Okay, so we're on the same page, all right.
So I'd make that motion.
So we'll put this off until, long-term, until after March 19th.
So I'll second his motion then, because I understand what he's, yeah, you're doing exactly what he just said.
Yeah.
Got it.
Sounds like my wife, though, because you say the same thing, but we say, oh, he's wrong.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're saying the same thing. Okay.
You say so.
Well, all right. That's the bond. Okay, discretion on issuance of section 50 Package Store Liquor Store License to Sunmark LLC, 801 College Highway. All right, so we met last week and met with the young man, and his attorney, we went over it.
If, you need to understand that.
Yeah.
I just wrote her writing down for you.
Gotcha. Is it, that is that time, huh? All right. So we closed the hearing, we need to...
Those are the normal other, other establishments, so you just need to understand his.
Okay. We didn't go over hours with you. Come on up, sir. How are you this evening?
All right, how are you?
All right. Been a long day.
Yep.
Um, the only thing we didn't go over with you were hours, should you got, should you have, should you get the license?
Mm-hmm.
And normally in town, it seems to be 8 to 11?
Yes.
Okay, and then it looks like on Sunday is...
Sunday is 10.
10 to 11.
10 to 11.
He's got the knowledge.
He's seen this movie.
He has seen it.
Yeah.
All right. So what do we need to do, Carl? What's our next step?
Discussion.
Discussion.
Yeah, discussion and a vote.
All right.
First of all, I'd like to pre, tell you how much I appreciate all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
And I hope that you have a great opening.
Thank you, sir.
And I know you've been in front of our board before.
Yep.
And unfortunately, I'm gonna say the same thing I've told people for the past several years. Town of Southwood has a, a great number of liquor licenses, not just this, but all sorts of liquor licenses. And I appreciate business, and I'm pro-business, but I think the needs of the town are more than adequately served at this time. So I would not be in favor of, of issuing another liquor license.
Mr. Mogul?
Um, I, I guess that was one of the questions I had when this came back in front of us, because this had been in front of us before. Um, you know, that being said, you know, there's been additional, uh, construction over there on the golf course. We have the license available. Um, you know, the gentleman's fixed up the property, resolved an environmental issue over there. Our bylaws permit it. I don't think that we, I try not to be in the, you know, I know when we were on the planning board, I know Marcus and I had some spirited discussions on this, you know, being in the business of picking the winners and losers. If the license is available, um, I'm not dramatically opposed to it. Um, and we'll see. I mean, you'll find out if, if the town is adequately served, I, I think, too sweet. I mean, people are gonna come there or they're not gonna come there.
Right.
Um, so, um, I, I would, you know, I don't have any big objection to it, given, given what it is, but I, I just, you know, um, and I'll also, you know, we, I want to go on record, I know we've been very, very firm, um, on the issue with, with serving in these places, whether the tip certification that's required and...
Right.
And identification checks and all that stuff. And this board gives no quarter if there's a problem over there.
Right.
Um, so with that, continue the discussion, I guess.
Um, you know, we, we haven't given out, given out many, realistically, of any kind of licenses, but we have given out some.
Okay.
You know, we really have. And I, with Mr. Mogul, I kind of agree that if, if it, if it's not you, it's the, you know, another week, we're gonna have someone else in here until that license gets absorbed somewhere.
Right.
Um, there really isn't much on that side of town that, that, you know, you're right on the line, of course.
Right.
Um, so I, I kind of agree with Douglas that, I don't, I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it's gonna hurt us, and I don't think it's gonna hurt any local package store that's further up the street.
Right.
Um, it's just a matter of if it's enough to make it work for you or not, and, you know, the strictness of the rules, which you've apparently won another one already, so you're well aware of the rules. Um, you know, with the IDs and everything, you know, you're there, you, you get it, you know?
Yeah, because we get the tip certificate and everything. We have also the, you know, ID check machine and everything.
And I'm sick of looking at the eyesore, so I'm, I'm really excited to see you pave it and open back up and, um, because quite frankly, there's other commercial property for sale that's just up the street, so I have no idea what their plans are, if there is any plans, but, you know, I think it's just gonna keep coming in front of us until we get rid of that license. Good or bad.
All right, and I, I don't see us, you know, we haven't moved as a board to, or I don't know if it's even our purview to, to say, okay, we're gonna dissolve a license, right? And say, okay...
No, I don't think we can.
We can't have this license out there anymore, you know, they're just gonna take it back.
That's the reason I put it in, 2005 also, I put it in application, and that time is the same answer, it was the one of them, the board member says.
Right.
Because we have enough. But then they still have it, and we put it in application, we put it in the fees and everything on it.
Yeah. I mean, you have some housing moving in closer to you.
Right.
Um, I, I don't know how much the American End, you know, would help you or hurt you being so close. Um, there's no crosswalks there.
You know, delivery can be easily on, it's available.
Yeah, I just, I mean, you know, there's one at the bottom of the hill, too, so I don't, I don't think it's gonna...
We'll just see what happens. I mean, we've got, the license is there, whether it's gonna work or it's not work, that's gonna be, let the market kind of figure that out, right? We have the license, we issue it.
Yeah, you have the license, so...
If, if you can't make it work, or, or you do a better job and it doesn't, now it suddenly doesn't work for someone else?
Never know.
I don't know. You know, and it's a different approach.
That's not our fault.
It's not, it's not our place, right?
Right.
And it's self-limited, this is it. This is the last one we have.
Yeah, based by our population.
Right. So...
Yeah, but every other week, you hear on the governor may change that, and every other little corner's gonna have a, you know, well, I'm just saying, right?
And you go into others, you go into other states or, or other places where they, it's just all, doesn't matter, of course, there's no license per se, so...
Right. Understood. All right, so I guess I'll undertake a motion to approve. Was that what I should say?
Yeah, I guess I'll make that motion.
Oh, there you go. All right. Made a motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
Don't screw it up.
Please, believe me, don't screw it up. Have you met Chief Bishop?
Yes.
Yes, because he's right back there.
There he is, right there.
He'll be having coffee with you tomorrow morning.
No problem.
Is there anything we have to sign?
Uh, I don't think so.
Is there a Form 43 need to be signed?
Nope, later, no.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there's a lot of people in the hallway.
Okay.
I'm gonna invite him to come sit up here. I don't know where you are in your thing here.
Um...
Let's determine the positions of the...
That's true. All right. We're getting close.
I'll open any one.
Next up is the MOA with the IAF AFTO training expenses?
Yep, the Labor Council's approved with the chief with the fire unit.
Okay.
Just to make sure that the career officers can act in a field training officer capacity with the newer people coming in.
All right.
So, uh, he's recommending you sign off on it, and Labor Council's due it.
Is this similar to what we have with, with the, the police department, or it's a totally different architecture?
Because that's done as a right of assignment.
Right.
So...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We all sign it?
The authorized chair.
The motion's authorized chair?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Uh, before I forget, Joe.
Yeah.
Uh, I know the fire chief was also looking for somebody to go to the Legislative Breakfast next Friday.
It's my turn.
Are we gonna squash straws, or do you want to do?
You should go.
Rock, paper, scissors? I haven't gone in a couple of years, so I'll go.
You'll enjoy yourself.
That's all right.
You'll, you will.
Doug and I went last year, it was very, very educational.
And the year before.
Wonderful.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mogul. All right. Southwood Police Department donations. All right, so, so we have a $25 check from Louise Alberti.
So.
Second.
Only one, that's great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any update on the 250th we need to know about?
No, everything's going along smoothly, and, uh, we are getting closer every day.
Just give her all that anyways. Okay. And those weeks are gonna go to Mondays or Tuesdays, or is there something about the meeting changing, or just being more often? It's not on here, I, there was an email.
Of...
Forget it.
No, it's just, uh, we're going back to our regular schedule.
That's what it was.
Regular schedule.
Okay.
The third Monday of the month is for the main meeting. We meet in the auditorium and...
Okay.
Always looking for new members, on a worker base.
Worker base. All right, you got it. All right, up next, North Pond Land Acquisition and Town Meeting Review Warrant articles for 3-19-19. Come on up, folks, I'll free up two seats. Two seats. Yep. How are we doing?
Good, how are you?
All right. Okay.
So like I have a really giant chair, like I'm not telling this already.
Wow. Hey, we're slowly getting those fixed, let me tell you. That's been a, an issue and a half.
Okay. He's got permission.
So your, your signatures came back, I think you know, 100 and, I'm probably off on my numbers, 151 were okay, I think 19 weren't. Michelle Hill sent them letters saying how they can register to vote, the light way. Two were from out of town, I believe we sent them a tax bill to see if they're...
[laughing]
Since they're so excited about North Pond.
Got a little bit of help.
Right, you never know.
Or donation.
Or a donation, right. And we also have, Michelle did up a, uh, a thing we're gonna give to the press that explains, you know, the date they have to register to vote, if they're not already registered to vote, um, and just the clarification of a few things. So it was great of her to do that. Um, I guess we'll get into that shortly. All right, so this was good, 151, it worked. You're there. And tonight, we need to basically go over what the wording is, or just approve it?
You have the wording of the petition. Ben has given you a draft article.
Yes.
That added it on. To last week, you only had one article on your special warrant. Now you have the petition.
Okay.
So that's what you were gonna look at, and then Michelle and I were emailing each other, and she knows the process of what has to happen to create a motion.
Right. Yeah. And apparently, we can't help.
Right.
Apparently, in months and, a couple of years ago, there was a, an article of some kind. The town helped, whatever. Whichever way it went, it went. But whoever wasn't happy then decided it was all kinds of ethic violations.
Fine by me.
So I get enough trouble by myself. I don't need, I don't need your help getting in trouble, so...
That's fine.
We're not used to not being helped.
That's true. I'm like, what do you mean, our hands are tied? Well, yeah, I'm like, okay.
That's okay.
Um, I will get you caught up, I did talk to the lady today.
You did? Let go.
Well, I'm sorry. We talked to her. And I had to have, like, this thing on my nail, so it just kept pinching, so the pain would make me shut up.
Mm-hmm.
Um, did you know she was a substitute teacher in Southwood?
I did not, no doubt.
And I pretty much blamed her for me going to summer school.
Did she happen?
Yeah. And that was the only time I got a half a smirk out of her.
Okay.
But I did get a half a smirk. Um, she has no interest at all in playing with the number. Um, in her eyes, this has been a nine-year project.
Mm-hmm.
She's not happy with, I shouldn't say she's not happy, she just seems to be disappointed with either, I get whatever name I say, she's disappointed with. So we'll just leave it at that, and we'll throw anybody under the bus.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we did have a nice 20-minute conversation, and yeah, she has zero interest in even tromping a smidge. Um, but that's fine, that's why we had that conversation. Um, uh, she scares me versus, um, I thought I'd be a little bit more charming, but no, 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 no. Uh, and we did talk to, a long talk, conversation with Franklin Land Trust over, you know, same, is, rough issues and whatnot, and that went fine for 45 minutes this morning before we called her. Hers was at 10:30, Franklin Land Trust was at 8:00. Um, so we, I got a lot more clarification of how the 1.8 for that piece ended up being won, and how it kind of just moved over, and, and, you know, just the basic answers, I think they always were, but I got to hear it from them. Um, so yeah, she's fine with, she's fine with no matter what happens.
Holding out for the full boat.
For the full boat, and I, and I, you know, I am the jerk in the room, so I did say, if it didn't happen, is there any thought of right of first refusal?
Mm-hmm.
And she actually was... And she actually was, we could discuss that after the fact, should we be there, which I was surprised.
But that the value of the land was...
But she couldn't tell me enough times how that price was based on nine years ago and it could be up to, you know, I'm not gonna put words in her mouth, but five was pennies, which she thinks is really worth, so I said, okay, it's all good, we're not here to argue and, you know, but at least that door is open if it needs to be. We also did talk about maybe her, there was talk of her financing the one-point-two. Then once again, she didn't yell at me much, but, um, her thought process honestly is five to eight years, no longer. And she wasn't, um, didn't have an interest rate picked out, of course, because, you know, we're just asking these questions as we go. So she was gonna reach out to her accountant, her attorney, get back to us later in the week. So she, she, she had a stomach for it, but she wasn't looking for anything really long-term. When she first talked, I thought it was gonna be four months. And then she got to five to eight years, you know, so I was thrilled, because right away it was like, well, you're talking a couple of months, we can deal with it, and I'm like, oh shit.
Land can go to thirty years.
Yeah.
You know, we were, you were obviously asked for other interest rates down to zero.
Yeah, I kinda said, you know, zero looked pretty good, maybe you could write off the difference on your taxes and, and she didn't scream, she just said, you know, let me talk to my attorney, my accountant.
Trying to do, maybe she could get a tax benefit that way.
Yeah, tried to sweeten the pot.
But the term wasn't, the length wasn't gonna do it for her, so she's gonna get back to us.
So that's where I got today with, with those two folks.
Well, we definitely appreciate you doing that and thinking creatively...
Well, I didn't wanna kick it the can any further, this, you know, that was the big issue, if we're gonna meet today, let's at least know, everyone knows where she stands. And, and so on.
Yeah, no, that's great, we really appreciate that.
You know, as, as the entity, that would be the owner of everything, we've sort of been left out of the loop the last number of years, it was all being done by a private person on another board. Who had no jurisdiction over it and then we, we just weren't getting the information.
But we can call anytime she says.
Yeah, yeah, she's pretty amenable to take our...
You know, usually I'll take anyone up on any phone call, but, I'm like, okay, yeah, no, that's good, I'm not gonna call you again. Alright, so that's where we're at, so now we wanna review what's in front of us?
Uh, the warrant, yeah, you can just look at the warrant straightforward, it's, it's just the two articles.
And it's basically a copy of what they gave us, with the signatures, right?
Yeah, yeah, the, the actual article?
Yeah.
There's the CPC article that was written by council.
Right.
Based on the vote that they took a week or two ago when Chris was...
Could we take a moment to review that first, before we look at ours, maybe look at yours at first?
Yeah.
Is that okay? Okay.
Yeah, I got it, I just...
So the very last piece of paper?
No, I messed up, I mixed everything up.
I just stopped looking.
Should be, do you have it, Joe?
I saw it.
It'll be the last piece of paper in the action folder.
Oh, in the action folder?
And in the...
Oh, there you go, right. Yep. As long as it's not written like the marijuana one where yes means no and no means yes, that's the, that's all I care about. Yep.
Straightforward.
Yeah.
That looks very straightforward to me, um, one of the concerns definitely that a number of us have had was, um, some of the information that I understand was mistakenly reported on Channel twenty-two.
Oh, Channel twenty-two, are they out there?
In regard to...
So we'll go over that, real quick. So the conversation was, you know, apparently that young man was out taking photos and video of the lakes. So he showed up late, parked his thing in the thing, I don't think he was filming much or anything. And they tell me afterwards, yeah, you never stop and talk to people, just keep walking, so I didn't get that memo. So, you would like to talk, sure, I don't give a shit, I'll talk about anything. So where are we at, I saw the CPC five-hundred thousand, doesn't affect the tax rate, blah, blah, blah. Then I should've shut up, but he says, is there anything else that happened, I said, well, I'm, I'm a little confused, I said, um, I believe we have one-point-two million from a citizen's petition in front of us, but I don't have the petition. Which, and I know, and I know why I don't have it, um, and I believe that will, I don't know how else to do this, but yeah, I guess that would affect the tax rate. So he took that piece and that piece and, and as you saw, you saw a three-second bit and I, man, I got a fat neck too, if you noticed that too, I was shocked. But, uh...
Camera ads, twenty pounds.
At least, holy shit. Um, so that's what actually happened, uh, and then Beth, um, I'm gonna call her Beth after then, because I don't even know the other name.
I still call her Beth, it's Thomas.
Thank you. Ed posted the next day on social media, I called Beth before I even commented and said, Beth, yeah, CPC, it does not affect tax rate. And I will gladly comment on your social media site, but if I'm gonna get slammed, I'm not in the mood for that, and I don't think half the people in this room are. So I did comment and Beth was great, she, right away, yep, Joe, thank you very much. And then further down, you know, how you're gonna find the money and, and, oh, it gets, it gets ugly quickly. But I did comment, one lady asked about voting, and I think I said, I, I think you can, but I'm not sure you gotta check with the clerk's office, no, you cannot mail in your vote, you have to be at town meeting. Right, so then Michelle Hill grabbed me for an hour and lectured me about that. Which, she was a Marine, so I did shut up and listen to her, and that's where we have this now. Cheat cheat for Mr. Didi to keep his mouth shut. So that should have you up to date, I believe the Westfield paper was okay, I believe the Springfield paper was okay, I didn't read any article, um, after the, the crap with Channel twenty-two. So that should get you up to date.
I definitely, um, checked the written articles and twenty-two did correct their online article and Sabrina Poehler also sent a message, I sent her a message and called. Unfortunately, the damage was done, what people heard was the North Pond vote raises my taxes, and that's what they heard. So I, the point I bring this up is not to chastise you or to make you feel bad, or to slam Channel twenty, well, that's great to hear, thanks.
Well, because you, you said you were worried about my looks and I was very impressed that you can, you were concerned about my looks. But I think what you meant was how I looked and whatever, and I thought you were...
You was the representative of the town.
Oh, well...
That's what I meant.
They voted that in years ago, that's, you know, and they can fix that this April, so...
Anyway, moving forward, having said that, I think what's of critical importance is at the town, a special town meeting, it is explained very clearly, as I'm sure Moderator Putnam will do, and the explanation for the warrant articles will read, that the five-hundred thousand dollars from CPC money comes from the three percent surcharge after the first hundred thousand dollars, and that is very clear to people and it is, you know, just really magnified that this does not come...
Right, the first article does not come...
Your tax money.
And I'm sure the Westfield paper will clear that up tomorrow morning.
I'm sure they will.
If you buy the paper.
I don't have Facebook, so the whole correction thing on Facebook didn't really do it for me, so, but doing it at the...
A lot of things don't do it for me, but I still smile and talk to you, so, you know.
So the town meeting correction will be really rare, or not correction, but the town meeting explanation will be...
And I think it'll be explained before that through the press anyways, I'm not gonna wait till town meeting to...
No, correct.
To worry about it, so between that paper and the other paper and the twenty-two news calls. But, uh, yeah, no, we'll make sure we explain that wholeheartedly, absolutely.
Great, great. So I guess, um, another thing that we would like to, two other things we'd like to request would be, um, that this five-hundred thousand dollar CPC warrant article occur before the one-point-two bonding request. And I don't know if that comes through all of you or if that's something we need to ask Moderator Putnam for?
The selectmen set the order of the articles on the...
We set the order, yeah.
So we are, uh, behalf of the citizens requesting that that vote go before the bonding.
Okay, take it under advisement.
Thank you. Um, we'd also like the information on what our debt service would be, so that we'll be able to inform the voters exactly what the tax impact of this bonding for one-point-two would be.
Okay, so it's your petition, how many years are we doing this for?
I understand that it can be for thirty years under the DOR regulation.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
But you have to tell...
Okay.
Right, that's your, your motion's gonna spell all those things out, because then, then once we know what that's gonna say, then we can figure out what the numbers are.
Okay, well, we need some, we'll need to do some research, because obviously we wanna make a decision that is in the best interest of the taxpayers of the town.
Yep. And that might affect the tax rate. Right? I just wanna hear you say it, it might, it actually might affect the tax rate, so far where you live, nothing...
You borrow money, does it affect your credit report?
I didn't say credit, I said the tax rate, there's a difference. Okay, so you're aware of that.
I am aware of that.
Awesome. And I do need that information sooner than later, because we would like to meet with the Finance Committee next week, probably before our meeting, to go over what you have for us, so everyone's on the same page.
So give me a deadline, I'm deadline oriented.
Good, noon time, Friday? Does that sound good? You, or, you said that...
I do work.
I do too, believe it or not.
Alright, I'll do my best.
Well, you know what I mean, just so even Monday, but just, the sooner we have it, then we can run our numbers with bond council and everything else, to add to our fire department, every, other thing that we talked about.
Absolutely, and, you know, people ask us all the time, so obviously we wanna have the correct information, I will not tell anybody anything I cannot verify with facts, so that would be really good to know. Okay, um, you know, our last thing is we're having a fundraiser Saturday night, so if any of you gentlemen would like to come, we would love to have, join us.
I think we tried to RSVP, but they hung up on me, no?
Well, it's my email, so unless you're technologically disadvantaged...
Oh, I'm disadvantaged, I'm disadvantaged, don't you worry about that, I know I'm disadvantaged.
She told me she wanted to, but...
Yeah, let her, that's all good. I'm not even friends with her, I tagged her on a post. I have six friends and those aren't even, I think they don't even exist. Well, no, one's my sister, so it must exist.
Not having the motion on the warrant, then it gives you time to figure out what the motion is going to be, what's going to be in it, and the length and all that, so you can look at the models. Because different models will give you, there's different assumptions of interest rates, and then there's different lengths and so forth, than I know last time, you know, we mentioned, you know, thirty-year note's gonna hold a lot of interest.
Understood, and as, as I had mentioned before, I'll say it again publicly, is that this is kind of the last thing we really wanted to have happen at this point in time. Um, but we had an inkling that there wasn't gonna be necessarily negotiation from the seller and we really couldn't, you know, take a chance of losing this very precious project, so, you know. I, I wish we weren't doing this right now, with every fiber of my being.
I know poor Franklin Land Trust, we should did it a year ago, because I can't get over all the excitement, where was this a year ago? And I'm like, well, here we are, you know, so, alright, so you're aware of this?
Yes, and, uh, I've been reminded that at the town meeting, uh, is point of information, that people checking in the town meeting, there'll be a designated area for voters and non-voters. So, we always have that, but we anticipate, you know, because I know there was...
Plus it's in the gym, so it's gonna be...
So there'll be a spot...
No, no, Michelle asked me to tell you, they're gonna be stamping hands for registered, one color, non-registered, the other, and then if it goes to a ballot vote, you're gonna have to have the right stamp on your hand to get your...
To get a ballot.
Your red ballot.
Okay.
And she just heads around and puts it at the very bottom of the number, so...
Have we covered everything, Carl?
I think so, I mean, obviously a lot of people, I mean, from what we can do, a lot of people here have done as much as they can and have done a lot of work.
Maybe she'll have you.
Good times. Sir?
No, I think we've covered everything, I think you're well aware this board has been owning this project since the very beginning, alright? Having said that, I don't think anybody needs to demonize anybody on either side if we have a disagreement on the funding mechanism that's different, okay? So I, but I think this board has, has done a really good job raising money. Uh, we lobbied with a lot of people, Baker administration, Secretary Beaton, Representative Deagle helped us, Senator Humison. And, uh, we have preserved eighty acres, so, um, to me, the cup is half-full. But, uh, again, this board has done a lot of work and I hope that, uh, we can go to a town meeting and respect each other, because there is gonna be some disagreement in this issue, and I hope you understand that.
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything?
No, I, I said we support it, I agree with Mister Fox, we've supported the project and the process has played out as it is now, we have a warrant in front of us. We went, we did everything, as this board did in our meeting from, it was a month ago, three weeks ago now, we did everything we said we were gonna do. That's gonna be leveraged now to have a, a second article, that's a citizen petition, and that'll play out how it plays out, and there may be some spirited discussion at that meeting and we'll see how it plays out. And I, I also, I, I just wanna go on record, I appreciate the CPC coming back and having another look at that, um, and having that second vote.
Yeah, I appreciate that, very much.
Well, yeah, because it actually worked out, if they didn't do that, you wouldn't be in front of us, I mean, you would have had to get two hundred signatures, then the forty-five-day deal would have come into play, whether it did or didn't. You know, so it actually worked on your benefit tremendously, that...
Well, you told us you'd have a town, uh, special either way.
No, understood, but...
And we had, we had the same amount of signatures for bonding for one-point-seven, just so you know.
What?
I'm just letting you know.
It is what it is, but, I mean, it really worked out, had they, you know, I mean...
And it was easy to get those, it was a snap.
Yeah.
Just so you know, I'm just letting you know.
Yeah.
And, and we do, we, we know that, you know, you guys work really hard for the town, and you've done many wonderful things for this town. You know, and I, I, again, I don't like that there's this, you know, this negativity, this discord over this project, but, again, I have to prioritize a project over your feelings, unfortunately.
Yeah, and honestly, I don't...
I don't think that's it at all, I mean, I think we've been very respectful of the process, we've been respectful to each other. And I think what, why Chairman Fox is asking for is that for, that just to continue. I mean, this process hasn't been personal, it's been about the project itself and we just need to continue on and, you know, so it makes this country kinda great, and the, the open, open town meeting is, Chairman Fox has told me a thousand times and it's a lesson, well, worth learning again, is it's the purest form of government, right? You get to go and cast your own vote for how you wanna see it go up or down, so, that's how it's gonna be.
I would say that you, I, we're all disappointed that the fundraising didn't bring in much more, and that's really what it comes down to.
Absolutely.
You know, that you guys, everyone's running out of time. The well is dry for whatever reasons on the outside world and, so it just...
We're not giving up though, and just at our meeting last Sunday, we made a spreadsheet of all the different businesses that we could be, continue going to, and Westfield and Agawam, we're still going, Gangbusters to try to do what we can do and, you know.
Yeah.
Don't think when, you know, we're just like, oh, let the time go.
No, understood, but just that, you know, it'd be nice if we were, I mean, I was trying to tell the lady, you know, if you took one-point-eight from this day instead of just one, we'd be off by four hundred grand. You know, and there was another, they wouldn't let me talk at the CPC meeting, because realistically, the question at hand was the question in front of them that they voted down. Because I was ready to grab, there's roughly another two-fifty in there we could've snagged.
Right.
You know, and which would've got us closer to that four, had it been four, not one-point-two, but, you know, doesn't matter, right, it's over with and...
Right.
You can sit and dwell on all you want, which I chose to do with that lady, but, uh, she didn't wanna hear it. So, yeah, great.
Okay.
I'll shut up.
Thank you.
Alright, have a good night. Okay. I'll give you guys a moment. Next week we're meeting with the Finance Committee and we'll go over... Oh, signing will want Friday, correct. But it's already written, so...
You have to motion to move it.
I'll make a motion that approves the warrant as written, alright, we've decided.
I'll second the motion to send the warrant.
She's gotta call.
As written.
Are those in favor?
Aye.
Sure.
Anything else? You sure?
Could you leave those cleared, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I gotta go chase these people down the hall?
Yeah, I think I would, just so I... You got that?
I'll be back in ten minutes.
And, and, and don't come back and tell me there's a TV crew. Tell them they can leave. No, it's Michelle's turn, she can talk to them.
Doug's in charge.
Did you get a copy of this, this is the Michelle Hill stuff? Michelle Hill, I want this in the paper tomorrow. Basically, it says if you don't know if you're registered to vote, dial five-six-nine-five-five-zero-four and the girls will help you through to see. So if that can all be in there, that just helps people understand. You'll write about it, you'll, just more information.
Do you need it, like, absolutely tomorrow or...
No, 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 but just make sure it's part of your article. Just, it gives, just... Yeah, next couple of weeks, but not on Thursdays.
Alright, I did the best I could.
Yeah, how'd that work out?
About usual.
Yeah. Okay.
There was more. Yeah, it was Attorney Moore. I hadn't seen him in a long time, yeah.
Really? Didn't look like him.
It was Brad Moore, yeah.
And you know him from?
We've, we ran across each other on the planning board, and of all things, of all things, I was on vacation on the Cape one day, and in a store, and some guy taps me on the shoulder, and it was him. So that's how it happened.
Yeah. Awesome. Alright, so that was North Pond. So CRC, date is four nine nineteen for their little event. That's correct, right? We changed that date, it's the right one?
Yep. It's Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday. Determine level of interest for Seventeen Depot Street.
Yep, we brought up last week, you wanted on their whole business to think about it for a week, and that's-
Is that the, the electric, the old barn? No?
No, it's the house, next to the fire station, on the corner.
Oh, I keep thinking, I'm so sorry. Yeah, no, okay, I am so sorry.
I'd like to reach out to see if there's any possibility of some of the back area, you know, if they would consider any of that.
Splitting it up.
Even the back part.
Because I knew there was some, in the past, there was issues on the line where the association-
Building was?
Building was, and the fence, and-
Right.
I'd like to reach out, because I think it'd be good for emergency, fire and police.
If we had some kind of, on that backside.
So, maybe we can just approach them and see if there's any interest at all.
Right. That makes sense.
And Kevin, Tony's got the number for the person, the lady, she's the one who called me, so.
I'm assuming he's got, yeah, he's got some involvement with that.
He does, he's got a lot of involvement.
Okay.
He should have numbered, show everybody involved.
Right, so I'm gonna need that, that contact info again.
Alright, up next is Airbnb short-term rental regulations. Have you guys had time to look over this?
I just, you know, I-
No, council just sent that.
Oh, good.
FYI, there's a, there's an ad hoc subcommittee that's working on that, correct?
From the planning board, or from?
No, not that I'm aware of. It's on our agenda for tonight.
Oh, there you go, so I'm getting out ahead of the horse.
Was you had asked, you asked me to chair a meeting.
Ah, that's what it was.
Yes.
After selectmen's meeting, so we got town council to come, and we had the planner, the fire chief, some other public safety officials, building and so forth, and Kevin's got all the information on it too, and it was just to go over the different issues. The Board of Health had actually requested this to be looked at, and it's, it's more than just Airbnbs, it's short-term rentals, there's a whole bunch of things, so, rather than get into all these issues, council put a chart together, and he gave us an idea of all the different laws that cover different aspects, and he did it and packaged it in such a way that different boards and entities can look at it and see if they want to do any of it. Right now, there's, you know, they're, they're not permitted, so they're prohibited, and so it's an enforcement issue at this point in time. The question is, is there an appetite for people to have bed and breakfast to be allowed? Right now, they're not allowed either. Well, and the thing is, people seem to think that they should be allowed at a minimum. If their owner occupy and they make the breakfast, that's the big thing.
Alright, but we know it's going on.
Does family count?
Oh, yeah, it's going on.
It's going on. Right, so- That's a good excuse at Christmas time, sorry.
I think I got that already.
But right now, it's just an enforcement issue.
Right.
So your zoning enforcement officer has been sending out zoning enforcement letters. But if there's an appetite for people to allow any piece of it to exist, then it's gotta go through the regulatory agencies, and the planning boards may have to change definitions, they may have to bring forward some legislation, and none of that's gonna happen overnight.
No, no.
You had wanted to know, did any of this affect your upcoming deadline for ballot questions or town meeting? And it's not, because you won't have anything ready for any of those weeks. But the issue's still gonna need to be looked at, because you're right, just because we're not doing anything about it, doesn't mean it's not existing.
Right, right. It's existing, it's just, what do you want to do with it?
Right, we're not gonna make it for this year, but we can do the homework, and, and bring it to the planning board, and-
Well, the planning board's gonna be looking at this, and they may be bringing stuff forward to the selectmen. For back to them for here.
Okay.
That's their purview, right?
Even if it's changes in definitions, or other-
Right, but that's their purview. That's absolutely the right direction they got.
They can do that. You can send stuff to them too, directly, but they can also-
Correct, but of their own, they know that this, you said it's on your agenda tonight?
Yeah, there was something, Ruth has left, but I understood, there was something related to Airbnb.
So it's probably the same, and I know-
Yeah, because Alan, I asked Alan, Alan was involved. I asked Alan to bring it before your board, because the town attorney wanted him to do that. He says, at the very least, you should be changing some things.
Right, and this has been set forth, I, the police chief had reached out on a query about this, and related to, there were some incidents in town that appeared to be kind of short-term rental type situations too, that was causing a bit of a, some consternation for them as well. That's a good use of the word, consternation.
I liked that.
You know, and I, I know I talked to Greg on the phone the other day, and, you know, between Airbnb and Uber, because you can group them in the same thing, and, you know, when do you call a turtle a turtle, right? It used to be in the old days, they say, don't talk to strangers, don't get in a stranger's car. Now you go on, and don't talk to anyone on the internet. Now you go on the internet and have a stranger come in a car, and you get in his car and go somewhere. Same thing. Now, you go on the internet and you rent a strange, a bedroom to a stranger that comes into your house while you may be living there. It's turned everything on its head. So.
I had help this weekend, eighteen years old, going to some country western concert in Connecticut, and I'm like, oh, how you guys rent a room? Ooh, we got an Airbnb. I'm like, you're eighteen, you got an Airbnb? Well, we're gonna meet the guy at Dunkin' Donuts.
Sure you are.
Okay.
Can you imagine?
But you're right, no, I can't, I just-
It's unfathomable. Fifteen years ago, the whole thing was unfathomable. And when is Uber not a taxicab? It's not, according to law, and every, you know, every city in town that they operate, they're not, because they say they're not. And when is an Airbnb not a hotel or an inn, because they say they're not?
Well, they're regulated different, because police chiefs or boards give up the medallions.
You know, the analogy is with Greg is it walks like a duck and it talks like a duck, but it's a turtle, right? You rent, you rent, you go on a website, and you can rent a hotel, or you can rent an Airbnb, but they're not the same thing, though there's a bed and a place to sleep, and you check in, and you sign. I understand, Carl, I get it.
When we had the discussion with about the Airbnbs, the big thing with, you know, bed and breakfast was, is it owner occupied, and are they making your breakfast in the morning, whereas the other places don't do it, they just give you the place, here's the keys, make your own breakfast, do everything you want.
But yeah, I get it, that's a bed and breakfast, and that's a different scenario. I'm talking, straight up Airbnb is, now that you got people buy houses, and they just make them an Airbnb, and there's a code on the door that they give you the code, and it changes based on, you know, it's all electronic, right? But you get back to the basis of why, why did we have, why did some hotel regulation come in? Just like we have sprinklers in bars. Why do we have sprinklers in bars today? Because a hundred people died in the station nightclub fire. I bet you if you go back, all of the hotel regulations that we have started, because fifty or sixty people burned to death in a place that was an absolute death trap. And I'm sure of it. Now you look at Airbnb, and you're starting to see where people are renting maybe not so much qualified rooms in their house, that wouldn't normally be a bedroom in a house. I, you know, I don't know. I understand the new economy and all this other stuff, but it, it, some of it needs to be looked at. And that's why, you know, the state is trying to regulate it rather than, and look at it, and some of it I get is follow the money. It's always follow the money. But some of it is common sense that, you know, you get people start renting their basements out, where if you went to the building inspector and said, I want to put two basements in my bedroom, or two bedrooms in my basement, they say, no way, you only have one egress. But suddenly, it's an Airbnb, and it's okay. It's not, right? I guess. So that's why, and that's why the planning board is the proper venue for this, from a zoning point of view. Where should it be? Where can it be? And then that ties in zoning enforcement as to how it should go.
It's also a public safety issue, respectfully.
Absolutely, but that's where the safety officer often is, works very closely with the planning board on these things.
Some of them may trip ADA regulations, and then there's the fire code regulations, so.
Yeah, I get it. Okay, so we'll wait to hear back from planning board.
It's okay if the planning board pursues something.
We would appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I can press.
We don't want to go, you know-
Would you like that in a letter?
No, 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 this was, this absolutely is the right venue, and you know-
My capital.
Yeah, because you could see the, you know, on the, on the Airbnb, the Board of Health raised the specter of it first, because they have an angle at it, right? And there's other people that are gonna have looks at it, you know, whether it's the building inspector, because he's issuing zoning enforcement action about it today, so that puts it squarely in plan.
Yeah, he's sending out violation letters every week.
Sure.
Telling people you shut down.
It's not allowed.
Thank you. Alright.
Plus, you guys are good at that stuff.
Yeah, they were trained well.
Do we need an overlay district?
You may.
Yeah. Alright, I have the Select Board spring schedule in front of me. I'm not sure if you guys have that in your chair mail.
Yeah, that's, you went over this last, at your last meeting?
Okay.
So do you, did you?
What's, let's see, we're, okay. The only thing I would like to do is make these five thirties, maybe six thirties? If that's possible.
Is that good for you, Doug?
Is there a reason?
No, I don't care what time.
The five thirty, six thirties?
Make the meetings at six thirty.
Well, the March fifty camp, because you've got six thirty at the school.
No, 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 gotcha, gotcha.
Right, we're talking about later ones, right.
Twenty-sixth?
Starting April second, or starting, starting March twenty-sixth.
I think we're gonna have too many hearings.
Well, we just run later.
Okay, so make twenty-six, six thirty?
Yeah, what hearings do we have? Yeah, we got them. Those are just management changes, right? Cove two?
I hope so. I'm waiting on the paperwork form.
So she'll be done?
Should be.
And you got a CRC meeting one night, so that's why you have to stop some meetings early, you have other-
Oh, understood.
In the school, it took, meeting on two weekends.
You want to start six or six thirty?
You get other conferences.
What?
Which works better for you, sir?
Six thirty works better for me.
Okay.
That's why.
But the problem is, you have later conferences.
On a couple of them, I'm saying-
Right.
So the March twenty-sixth, we'll do six thirty?
And you have a budget, you have budget reconciliation meetings coming up for your work session to finalize the budget, and you have the meeting with the Finance Committee.
But that one, that's one you could shove at five thirty, ahead of the selectmen's meeting, if you want. On that day.
Those end up being all by themselves, too.
Well, there's also one days.
Why don't we just try?
I'm with you, Russ, I'm with you.
With the, working out with the CAO, when he thinks we can, you know, have six thirty meetings. I mean, we used to meet at six fifty, you know, and didn't have a problem, so all of a sudden-
Thinking late April.
What's the, is it the nap schedule? What's, what's the, what's the issue?
No, you have a lot of things to wait up.
Well, we also, but-
Late April is the better.
Alright, I will, I'll, he's made a suggestion, I will agree with the CAO, late April.
Fantastic.
Twenty-third, we'll try to start at six thirty?
And while we're talking about agendas, I, I, for the life of me, cannot remember, when are we having our Saturday?
This Saturday.
March second and March twenty-third, thank you very much.
This Saturday. Do we have our booklets?
Yeah, Robin's just about done.
There is four booklets in a cardboard box behind Robin's desk that I informed Robin that Mr. Steinhardt will deliver upstairs for that Saturday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Unless you wanted it earlier.
No, 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 Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I didn't know you had done that, so.
Well, I had some time on my hands today, and apparently, yeah.
Doesn't matter.
Right, so Saturday at eight o'clock or eight thirty?
I forgot it was this weekend, thanks for reminding me.
Does anybody know, is it eight or eight?
Checking.
It's eight AM.
Eight AM.
Yeah, I believe Steinhardt gets donuts at seven thirty.
Right.
And it's eight o'clock.
Cindy, could you send out a reminder?
Eight AM.
Thank you.
Yeah. And we're done by twelve, right?
Before twelve.
Budget hearing at eight.
Okay, so I can get the plan by twelve. Alright, that's fine, I will be there. Okay, so that's done. Airbnb is done. I have this, um-
That's, I sent you an email. Let me know what you thought about it. The only difference is there's a picture on the right-hand side, a fall picture. Mr. Fiore updated paragraph about the country club, it was a little bit off, and then I think Mr. Steinhardt, you changed the amount of businesses?
Yeah, Patrick.
Yeah. So this is a-
So we did that with Jess's office.
Have you read this, Doug? Or no? Okay.
Well, I just got a little problem. I always saw Doug's name and Joe's name in here, and Greg didn't mention me at all, so.
That may be a good sign.
Yeah.
Depends on the context.
Are you calling in backup now?
Yeah.
Chief, help.
Well, with my quote, you can, continued growth in town doesn't take away from the fact that you can still get stuck behind a tractor.
Yes, I like that.
And nine out of ten times, there's a fox on the tractor, so. He goes a little slow. That'll, that's, yeah. By the time this is printed, they'll get me out of it.
Craig, that's awesome. Oh, my quote's pretty good, too.
Uh, singular tax rate's fantastic for a business, that Select Board clerk, Doug Mogul, when does this come out?
Um, should be out first week of April.
He'll still be a clerk, okay. That's fine.
But we can always, maybe I can work something out, we can delay it.
Wow, we're good.
Or you could do the reorganization soon.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you like it?
Very good.
Yeah, so I love it.
Well, Carl's not mentioned, so.
Says Clippy? No, we'll just change our name.
Greg who?
We'll just change our name, if we don't like the name anymore, we just change it.
Works for somebody else?
Yeah, it does. Is that what that, is that, yeah, okay.
Stop.
Oh, good, I-
Don't sell past the close.
Alright. Hey, we're good. Alright, um, any other old business?
I don't know if this is old business or new business, but, uh, Mr. Mogul and I, along with the CAO, attended an open forum with the Southland Rotary.
Oh, how'd that go? Didn't see the invite, but okay.
It was very good.
Yeah.
And they had mentioned that they were going to be considering corporate memberships.
Right.
And Mr. Mogul and I discussed, and the CAO, you know, while we were there informally, you know, that perhaps the board should consider this as a way of getting out there. And the way the corporate membership would work is, the CAO would be named as the member, but it didn't limit us to send multiple people with him, or if he didn't make it, maybe a department head, or-
I would send people, I'd assign people, I'd assign a department head to go recruit, so forth. And we would be, we're a public corporation, be corporate member.
Right, so who pays for the meal?
Uh, the individual would have to pay for the meal.
Thank you.
Okay.
No free meal.
The, the fee would be one hundred and fifty-five dollars, which I would make a motion that we take out of the-
Selectmen's gift account. Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Are those in favor?
Aye.
So be aware that the Lions Club letter will probably be coming next. You know, because you want to get out there, like you said.
Right.
So you, so you may have to-
And the police chief going to Rotary.
Yeah. There you go.
We'll get it covered.
No, understood, but you know-
No, you're right, you're right.
It's all good, yeah, I think it's great. Um, good luck with that. I'll try to make one. Alright.
Everyone was asking for you, Joe.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, he used to be the president.
For many years, yeah, quite a few, quite a few years over there.